City Council meeting to order. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call, please.
Kim Collier.
Here.
Craig Koochaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Charlie Ford.
Here.
While email a copy of our December 6th minutes. I have a motion to approve the minutes. So, Lou. Wiley makes the motion.
Thanks.
Matt seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. First up tonight will be Bill Slite from AECom, as we're coming down to the year end and near completion of the sewer project. Only, you know, what, there's a tad bit more that's gonna happen yet this year, and then it kinda is gonna, I guess it'll be a little bit more in January.
Yeah, they've got a few items. They're almost complete.
Yeah.
I'd say probably fifty, sixty percent complete with the abandonment of the fold interceptor.
Right.
Um, they have, they work today, they'll work tomorrow, the weather, or whatever you wanna call the last cold snap, um, whatever modern term you wanna give to it, held them up for a couple days, but they're progressing. They have one item, the stop logs remaining to get to substantial completion.
What exactly is a stop log?
It's essentially a dam, and they're given a height, and you, they sit together and they create a watertight sealed dam to divert water one direction or another, and then you get it at a set elevation.
Okay.
Um, it's just an easy way to do it, and they're typically made out of synthetic materials, so they aren't gonna degrade. So, they had a, they were, it took them a minute to get the submittals in, they, they don't know why it took so long to get them, they were bugging them for a while, and they're pushing to get them in, so they'll be substantially complete with the project, which means everything will be operational by the end of January, is the intended timeline. And, at that point, the only thing left is surface restoration, so they're gonna come back and finish that in the spring when there's better conditions for seeding and paving. And, somewhere in the interim in between, they're going, the contractor Fleming is going to go on hiatus until when, so there should be minimal expenses, there'll probably be one final bill, some, any paperwork that we need to catch up on, but other than that, they won't be working, creating new, new charges for about two months, two and a half months. And, um, in that interim, we will be able to start, I was asked to start looking at putting the proposal together for monitoring, we're working on that, similar to what we did prior to starting this construction, where we will see how effective the improvements have been, create a model, take real life data and run that and create a comparison and go, okay, this is what is needed for the final design of the project, for the final phase, which is, we are almost six months ahead of the requirements of the Long-Term Control Plan with IDIM, per the amendment. So, um...
Overall, this project's went very, very smooth. The only change orders have all been relatively minor, and...
And...
Weather's been great, it's just...
Yeah. Um, yeah, we're actually, I was, I was putting some numbers together, 'cause you had, you had asked for this before, and I just threw some numbers together.
Okay.
Compared to our planning budget, was just under four million dollars from when we submitted the amendment to the Long-Term Control Plan.
Right.
For the construction, and with the, the, uh, the engineer's cost estimate, which was from Clark Dietz, was three point six million for the construction costs, and the actual bid and change orders to date, including a couple that we don't have all the paperwork on, but we have a rough idea, we're at about two point eight, two point nine million. So, we've, you've done very well on, on that aspect, and everything is indicating the construction has gone very well and is working the way it's supposed to.
Yep.
Um, and as far as the engineering fees, they're, um, from Clark Dietz, from Butler Fairman, from us, they're also well under the estimated budget numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from the planning phase. So, we're, doing, you're doing a good job, we're doing a good job, everybody's working well to make this...
Yep. Inspector Nikki says that, is this unbelievable how smooth everything has went? Fleming's guys are, are great to work with, she said.
Yeah, they've been doing a very good job, so that's, that's what you wanna hear.
Yep. All right. Any questions for Bill from anyone? Bill, any questions for us?
Um...
We're not done.
We're not done.
Don't think we're done.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's one more, right now what we know is, is there's one more phase, that's, that's where we're at. But like I said, you are several months ahead, we are trying to get the proposal together, because we wanna try and capture the early wet weather season of the year.
Right.
So, I'll be back, meeting with the mayor and Ann and everyone, and...
Low monitoring.
...run over that over the next month or so, so we can get started on the monitoring. Um, there is a planning budget for that, and, you know, we'll get that in, and, uh, and then do the modeling, and then have an idea of what is needed, and we'll be able to put proposal together and go back to IDIM and say, here's where, here's the, here's what we need to do to finish this, and hopefully it, you know, change the rules again or anything of the sort.
Yes.
So, um, I, as far as I can tell, everything's going well, I'm, I'm pleased, I'm hoping you guys are, the services we're providing and, uh...
Yep.
...just moving, move along to wrapping this up for you.
Yeah, we've been very successful.
Is there anything else to add, Ann?
I guess not, we just have to model, not keep going, but, yeah, just, now we're waiting for a big river.
That's right.
Not yet. Let's finish this, let's let them finish where they're at, and that's three weeks or so, and get this, the stop log...
Not that we want, we don't wanna flood.
You already said it, but I'm waiting on a big river.
We don't wanna flood, but, you know, we'll take a, a little higher river for a few days.
When I'm finished getting the sewer banning, it's like you were saying, progress, I mean, we don't wanna push anything through there, they're, they're most of the way through, and a lot of the, whatever debris or whatever may have been left in the old sewers been pushed out.
Right.
But we wanna, that'll probably be, they said, the week after the new year?
Yeah.
I believe.
He said after the, after they come back, we're gonna take them a few days.
Yeah. So...
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to y'all, and, uh, we'll see you next year.
Yep.
If there's any questions, please let me know.
Yep, careful going home.
Thank you. Shut down while I walk back.
Okay.
That's a mouse.
Is that your mouse, or that, did Mark?
That's mine.
That's yours, okay.
My, my mouse, that's not even the office that uses a mouse.
Uh, next, Phyllis, you wanna walk us through this? We have some encumbrances of funds from various city departments.
These are encumbrances that the department heads requested. Uh, for the police department, they're gonna get four gun racks, and this is money that's in the sixteen budget we're carrying over to the next year. It's one thousand nine hundred dollars. Fire department, bunker coat and bunker pants for four thousand six sixty-four thirty-seven. Campment's renovations for laminate countertops for kitchen and desk, and faucet and black back flash for the fire station, three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Hitchcock concrete, um, a sidewalk behind the fire station at two thousand eight oh two fifty. Um, common council budget is new focus HR, that's the balance, to develop the job descriptions and employee handbook for one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Toll for the general fund is fifteen thousand one fifty-five eighty-seven. MVH Street Fund, Indiana trailer sales for equipment trailer, five thousand five hundred. The lowest public safety for first attack, that's the partial payment for the fire grass truck, twenty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. And three police cars to Tom Kelly Ford, a hundred thousand seven hundred and eighty-six forty-two. Uh, the total encumbrance from this year's budget to next year's is a hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-nine, so I just need council's approval to allow.
I'll make a motion to approve the encumbrances from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen.
Wiley making the motion?
I'll second.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah.
Tyler's gonna abstain from the vote.
I didn't hear any linens in there. Linens?
Yeah.
Hey, Greg, real quick, are those gun racks, are those carved, the car?
Yes, it's a car.
To get him out of the trunk, send him to the...
Second.
Um, Craig, you seconded it?
I second it.
Um, motion by Wiley, second. From Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. Phyllis has her encumbrances. And then the next thing we have is a resolution to transfer, to transfer funds from one place and, to another place, and again, Phyllis, I'll let you kinda preface this, and then we'll have a short title reading and pass it.
This is resolution number two thousand sixteen dash eighteen. Um, this is to authorize me to transfer money. This isn't new money, it's just transferring monies from one category to another category within the department's budget. Um, City Hall, thirty-five dollars from professional services to operating supplies. Common Council, thirty-five hundred dollars from unemployment to FICA Medicare. Four thousand from unemployment to professional services. A hundred and fifty dollars from communication and transportation to printing and advertising. For the police budget, transfer a thousand dollars from operating supplies to rentals. Eight thousand dollars from operating supplies to machinery and equipment. Fire department, a thousand dollars from operating supplies to buildings. Fifteen hundred from other services to buildings. Forty-five hundred dollars from machinery and equipment to other supplies. A thousand dollars from machinery and equipment to repairs and maintenance. Six hundred dollars from machinery and equipment to rentals. A thousand dollars from machinery and equipment to buildings. Sanitation department, twenty-nine hundred from machinery and equipment to repairs and maintenance supplies. Twelve hundred from machinery and equipment to communication and transportation. Five thousand from machinery and equipment to printing and advertising. One thousand one hundred from machinery and equipment to other services and charges. MVH Street Fund, four hundred dollars from repairs and maintenance to printing and advertising. Eleven hundred dollars from repairs and maintenance to insurance. Four thousand three hundred dollars from repairs and maintenance to other services and charges. Two hundred dollars from repairs and maintenance to improvements other than buildings. Park and Recreation, fifteen hundred dollars from operating supplies to repairs and maintenance. Seventy-five dollars from operating supplies to office supplies. Fire Pension Fund, two hundred and fifty dollars from benefits to this outreach.
Thank you. Are any questions or anything on all these transfers?
This to like zero out the lines?
Um, if they, they continue to pay out, like if something's an office supply, they continue to take it out of office supplies, run short, then we just transfer it at the end of the year to cover that balance, just so they know what they really spend for that year out of that category.
Bring them to, okay, yep.
Make a motion to... Introduce. Right? Introduce. Resolution...
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash eighteen, my short title.
Thank you. The motion?
Second.
Motion from, from Matt, second from Cam. Tim?
Who's your vote?
They go, all fair? Thank you.
Resolution number two thousand sixteen dash eighteen, short title, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds.
Now...
Make a motion to pass. Resolution two thousand sixteen dash eighteen, on...
No, just...
Pass.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. Um, next, uh, next year, we've, we've authorized, uh, streetscaping out here on Monroe Street from the bridge to Third Street. We know that NDOT, at some point in time in their calendar year, two thousand, uh, twenty eighteen, which actually begins, uh, July...
July one, June thirty-one.
Yeah, of, twenty, beginning next year, seventeen, um, they're gonna repave. Before they repave, we would like to streetscape, okay? And we have, as the council's, set aside a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. Uh, we talked with Jones Petry Rafinsky about, uh, making our plans for that. We didn't like his price, told him to go back and sharpen his pencil.
Hell.
And he did. He came back, and, uh, we have a price of twenty thousand dollars, includes line two originals for professional service agreement for the Monroe Street sidewalk improvement project. Uh, includes site survey, design concept phase, a demolition plan, layout plan, site grading, drainage, drainage plan, construction details, project manual, traffic management plan, permits, fees. Kevin's pretty thorough in, in what he does, so, um, we've used him before, been very happy with him. Jeremy, any comments?
Basically, this is a little different project from what you would have on the Monroe Street, we ain't that, they own a NDOT. We're also looking at the lighting, making sure that we have adequate lighting. We plan on replacing the street lighting along here with the LED fixtures, LED poles, you know, such, more of a decorative pole, which takes some engineering from, uh, basically the light manufacturer, and all the permitting with NDOT, it seems like it's a lot of money, but there's a lot of work to ask to go towards, uh, this project, getting the permits and the blessing for that, and so on and so forth.
And Main Street had a meeting, and they tentatively have picked out a pole with the, the armature that comes out and the, the type of light, and that lighting company is now putting figures to that to see what that would run, and then, then they'll come back, and then from there, come to council, so...
But, um, basically, Sternberg, the light, lighting company, they're a very well-known company, they do a lot of street lighting, um, saw a lot of street lighting projects, poles, different shapes, sizes, configurations. Um, has been working with JPR, actually had a meeting last week to discuss a couple options.
Mm-hmm.
Nice whole project, I think it will set the, gotta set the pace for a lot of the improvements that we do downtown. It won't have a lot of hurdles with this project, it's more of a pedestrian sidewalk, lighting.
Get it done.
Pretty much about it, you know, you add the little stuff as you go.
But the lighting...
Just, uh, cans, stuff like that.
Lighting, a lot of thought's been put into that, so that it can be incorporated with something similar in the downtown and Madison Street when we do, do that, so it's...
Is there a need for water line, new water lines or anything, or is that...
Probably not in that area.
In that area.
But also, if they look at the lighting, they're gonna also look at, you know, by the side streets and stuff, and kinda plan as we go, you know, so you can also, um, you know, make the provisions to, you know, what first street and what second street, and so on and so forth. We're looking more at an underground wire instead of an aerial, clings a lot of things up.
Good.
There's a lot of, um, technology with these lighting systems. You can go sky high, you can go low, you can go the middle of the room, you know?
Lot of different options.
They have, they have the technology to send you either a text message or an email for like it's out. What minute it went out, what, you know, what day, so on and so forth. Don't know that we wanna do all that, but, you know, that gives you an idea, you know, on some of the technology and stuff that goes along with it.
Is this to the bridge or to include the bridge?
To the bridge.
What do we think about lighting on the bridge?
We talked about that. We, we discussed that with NDOT, or JPR can discuss it with NDOT, kind of a group effort. Um, it's really not gonna change their scope much at all, um, because maybe Sternberg's gonna do a lot of the layout and stuff.
And then we even talked about lighting beyond the bridge, but not, not next year.
But, yeah, my thought would be that if we, if we're going that far, I mean, that is a dark spot.
Yeah.
And if we can, sending you at one time, those pictures they used to have, lighting on each corner.
Right.
So, if it's in, within the scope of the project, if they can incorporate that, I, I think that would be good.
Going MLK, Port Wayne.
No.
Oh, that'd be cool.
Currently, or, he's scoring the bridge, there's a pole there, a decorative pole, that we would probably try to include, and you could do something on another corner too.
Yeah.
We, we can just look at a lot of options.
Yeah.
I know going in the NDOT project, going from east of the bridge to the high school, that whole lighting system's gonna be redone under the NDOT project.
Okay. It's dark.
There won't be pretty poles.
It'll be lit.
There'll be more of a metal pole, but it will be...
Will they be LED?
Yeah. They will be the more of the LED and, and the proper spacing, so you won't have a lot of the, the darks that we have now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking that, I mean, we, we talked about all this time, is the idea of using the east side of the bridge as the entrance to downtown, we incorporate the lights all the way out to that point. It, it accomplishes that with a lot less probably expense than redoing the bridge, which we're not going to do. Uh, the idea of, you know, I, I don't know, have we abandoned the idea of a more safe pedestrian crossing the bridge? Can, can we, I, I guess that would be another question, is can they even put up a railing in there? I don't know. Without, without shifting things that we talked about before, but...
I think NDOT's open for discussion on, on a lot of that, just different conversations that I'm having with NDOT. We just need to get those people to come back down and revisit that.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, it's out of the question, you know, we just need to have that conversation.
Obviously Kevin is well aware, I mean, he's involved in that, so, okay.
Yeah, Kevin and I have talked about both, both corners. This includes basically just the west side of the bridge, but I'm sure for what it is, um, we can get to the two east corners of that bridge.
And then to the west, how far?
Always Third Street.
Third Street?
Yeah, basically, if you're gonna use the right, right, and, and, or, is, is where about, you get the scope of the project is.
So, uh, I need a motion to approve this, uh, contract agreement with JPR for twenty thousand dollars. So, coming out of... It comes out of our hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's set aside for the, the, uh, project. Part of that budget.
Do you...
No, 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 not Madison Street, the, uh...
Or Monroe Street.
Monroe, Monroe Street, yeah. Um, hold on, I can tell.
The MBH is not good.
Uh, you know what, I don't have, I don't have it, yeah, but I don't see where it's coming from.
Oh.
Is it, is it not MVH?
No.
No.
No, that's, that's...
I might have it.
I don't want to, I think it's...
I thought it was in Jeremy's budget. Is it not?
No. It's either CD or CED.
Why the money's one of those two?
Budget line.
I can see it, I don't remember.
All right, you get a motion, I'll give a second. Have a motion and a second, uh, to approve JPR. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. And then, uh, next, is kind of something you have to do every December, certificate of appointments. Some of the board members on various boards' terms have, have expired, and, uh, some of the members have agreed to come back, and, uh, actually, only one has not, and we kinda cross that as we get to them. Yeah, Sam. Patrick Pete Brown has agreed to stay on the Alcohol Beverage Commission, and on the, where's this one? This is on the Board of Zoning Appeals, Bill Lynch is going to go off and said he enjoyed his time serving, however, he doesn't have the time to do it now, so I wanna publicly thank Bill Lynch for the time he gave, and Bill will be replaced on that, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals by a familiar name, John Schultz. And then, uh, on the Board of Zoning Appeals, also Bill Stuckey, who was, was on there, he has agreed to come back again. Um, on the, uh, Decatur Plan Commission, Dennis Shimon, who was on and is, looks, looks forward to coming back. On the Park Board, Joan Seifring is gonna be reappointed, reappointed, and then on the Decatur Housing Authority, um, Jack Matlin is gonna be reappointed, and so will Dean Filling, and Charlie Abel. So, those are all the, is that it?
That will have...
Okay, those are all the, the what appointments did you call these?
Those are...
Various ones, and then, and then in addition to that, we have the Redevelopment Commission, which, that is reappointed every year, and those guys, now that they got a little money, they're all excited about staying on that, on that board, so, uh, that would include, uh...
This is council's appointments.
Okay.
John Craig, Russell, and Larry Ish, and all of the council to sign their certificates, please. And then the mayor's appointments with Rex Hemsky, Ron Stories, and Max Miller.
And then in addition to that, from the school board, they appoint a non-voting member, and that is Tim Ellerding, right? So...
No.
No? Tim is?
You picked Tim, but that's not until July.
Okay.
Yeah, but he comes from the school board, and he's non-voting.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, we just need to make all these matter record, and then council, please.
So, Lou. Okay. Motion from Matt, and a second from Tyler. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. We're gonna pass these all the way down to Wiley, and you can start passing them back if you'd like. Uh, then we have a couple of conflict of interest and nepotism forms that we need to approve. Do you have those?
Okay, the conflict of interest forms that were filed for the year two, two thousand seventeen, um, these are all people that are employed with the city and are also doing work for the city, so they have to disclose that they are doing that. Leo Feasel, he's a volunteer fireman. Taylor Gage, he's a fireman. Jeff Sheets, Fire Captain of Training. Gray Kitson, Plan Commission and Board of Zoning Appeal. Jim Hitchcock, Assistant Fire Chief. Andrew Stinson, volunteer fireman. Anthony Stinson, volunteer fireman. Tim Baker, City Attorney. And Tim Ballman, a fireman. We just need to make these matter record, these will be filed with the State Board of Accounts and the County Clerk's Office.
So, Lou. Matt makes a motion, second, and Craig seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you very much.
And then, required by law to do the nepotism, this is stating that the city is complying with the nepotism law, we're not hiring anyone that's related to us in direct line of supervision or contracting, and everybody needs to sign these, every elected official, so...
You need another...
A signature for everybody.
You need another, uh, signature?
And there's two copies, I believe, yeah, one for contracting, one for hiring, so, that's Matt. Greg.
That's Matt's. Hmm? That's Matt's paper to sign. I get my own?
Yeah, Riley and Cam. I don't have Tyler.
Hmm. Tyler's on the back of somebody's, maybe? Sign, sign both of these.
The boxes are mine. That's why I lose. Do we go ahead and date it?
Yeah.
Can I do your sign?
So you just need to sign these, and there's no motions or anything like that, you just need them signed, turned back in?
Uh...
Who did today?
Twenty.
You wanna make them matter of record?
These were made, were made about record, right?
Yeah, those were.
Okay, yeah, these need to be signed and turned back in, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, here it is. The other one was Tyler's, so I can't recount them, I'm sorry.
You don't put, we don't put anything else there. Here, copy off ours. What else you got? All right. Tim?
Uh, I've got a couple of things. This kind of goes in hand in hand with the, the conflict of interest and the nepotism, but, uh, each year I've asked that the council sign a consent to representation. Uh, I was appointed to serve again as the Salways District Attorney. Uh, as far as I know, the mayor has not indicated the desire to fire me for the upcoming year, so I think I'm going to be city council, uh, or city attorney as well. So I ask that you sign a consent, acknowledging the representation of both bodies. It's something that I have to do for ethical compliance, so.
Okay, then what about the, uh, fees for the, or do you need, or do you need, do you need to make this a matter of record or something?
Yeah, that needs to be signed and made a matter of record then.
Motion to make that a matter of record. So move. Wiley, make the motion.
Say.
Got a second from, I think, Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. And then the Salways fees for 2017.
Yeah, then, um, Salways District met this morning. Each year the district submits a transfer station contract to the cities and towns. The, uh, prior year contract was, uh, $42.20, I believe. So, uh, this year's, this upcoming year, 2017, uh, the contract goes up to $42.92 per ton. Uh, that is tied to a 1.7% increase in the CPIU, which is now an escalator clause in, in the contract. So, uh, at this time, the, what I need to have done is approval of the transfer station contract for 2017. There's two copies that will be signed. And then, uh, I also submit with this a e-verification certification from the Salways District to the city saying it doesn't hire illegal railroads. And the mayor has already signed an e-verification certification, uh, that will go back to the district indicating that the city doesn't hire illegal railroads. And again, those are statutory requirements, so. Uh, I need a motion to approve the transfer station contract. Then there's two copies the council members need to sign.
And how much, 72 cents a ton?
Well, it went up 72 cents, I believe, cents a ton.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion from Craig, second from Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. Sign. What else you got?
That's all I have.
All Tim has, all right. Uh, takes us down to my report and all I, all I really have to say is that we're off and running on, uh, the 224 project. Other than the day when it was in the paper that our water quality wasn't good, I would say Tuesday was my other worst day of the year. A lot, a lot of texts, phone calls, emails, um, semis. And, uh, we've been working on that all week and I think we're making some progress. Today Jeremy had a, a meeting with NDOT and, uh, there's gonna be some additional signs placed. We have, we've instructed Greg and his patrolmen, we've instructed the county and even the state to cite anyone inside the detour area that's a semi driver that's not making a delivery or coming back from a delivery. But somehow still are getting past us and oftentimes winding up in Stratton subdivision, so. We're working on that. More signs, more. More signs. Uh, I think Greg said, he, he just kind of took a rough count of how many trucks have been stopped, not necessarily cited, but stopped, some of them cited. 28 or so was just from the city police. And then there's, uh, likely some others from the county and, and, uh, state, so. We're working on it, homeowners. I'm, I'm sorry, I think it's gonna be a long 11 months, especially for the people in Stratton and we're gonna do everything we can to make life as good as we can for them, so. Yeah, once the word gets out to the trucking industry, we think that it will pretty much go away. It's a pretty severe penalty for a trucker to go around the barricade, so. That'll stop. Other than that, all I, all I had to say was a Merry Christmas to everyone and, uh, have a blessed Christmas and safe and happy New Year. How about department heads? Greg?
Um, I just wanted to thank you for the Decatur dollars.
Thank council, not me. Les?
Same thing with Greg. I, thanks for, uh, everything you've been doing. Wish you a, everybody a Merry Christmas. And a special Christmas gift, uh, today the BFW stopped by with a $1,200 check to donate to our ongoing smoke detector program, so, uh, I think Adam probably got with the, uh, the paper that, uh, you know, just, uh, can't thank the service clubs enough for all they do for us. Their $1,200 for the smoke detectors, so.
Did you report at the last meeting about your gift from Bunge?
Uh, no, 'cause it, it's been.
I thought, I thought it was most, yeah.
Yeah, um, and Bunge stopped by, uh, last, last week and, uh, they, when we had the dryer fire two, two years ago in January, uh, we had an after-action meeting and they're like, you know, is there anything that we could purchase that would help make this maybe go a little better or maybe keep somebody's out of, out of harm's way a little, a little better? And, uh, there's a monitor, a ground monitor, it's a portable nozzle, basically, uh, that we can set up and, and we can just leave it. It articulates back and forth and, and, uh, I guess it's just pretty much self-sufficient. And if it gets bumped or rocked, uh, it automatically shuts itself off if it gets a little around any. And, uh, we, you know, we talked about biomunk, not something we would just go out and, and purchase, but, uh, Bunge did, uh, because we asked and had a good corporate relationship with them. It, it's valued at about $5,000, so. Check our Facebook page, there's a picture of it on there, you know, thanks to Bunge and really all the industry that they do a lot for us in the course of the year. That was a special Christmas gift from Bunge and then today get a check from the BFW.
You must've been good.
We think that'll happen.
Jim, you got anything else?
Appreciate everything, uh, that you guys do for us as a great council.
Thank you for everything.
Roger?
All our houses out in Parkview, um, we haven't got to tearing them down yet, but we're getting light, folks. We've got the environmental assessment done on them. Now we've gotta get the abatement done. There was some asbestos in a few of them. The abatement company has to send a, give IDA a 10-day notice, just whatever. And, uh, hopefully after the first of the year, we can start taking them down. Jeremy's got one, we got one that's been declared, four of them. We gotta get the, that's just the abatement done to them and they'll be ready to come down.
Dan?
Our department appreciates the Decatur dollars. Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Bill, do you have anything?
Nope, nothing.
Okay. Dan? Melissa? Jeremy?
Thanks for all the support. Good on you here.
Thank you, guys. Tim, you had something else, I think?
I do. Uh, I have to mention that we were successful in closing.
Yeah.
With Community Family Services. We now have control of the property for the Wetlands Nature Preserve Project, so, finally.
It's been a long road, but.
Yes.
That was very painstaking.
I do have one other thing. The last couple of months we've been working with Brett Miller. He's been on the master drive, uh, structural sewer, uh, improvements and construction improvements. We're getting very close to getting an announcement, so I should have some more information before the next meeting.
Good.
That, that we can get out to the public. I just want the master drive people to, uh, realize we haven't forgot about you. Just, um, kind of went another avenue to make it more efficient and, and just so our projects could be.
This'll be a lot, a lot less messy. Councils, uh, Matt?
You touched on the 224 projects. I realize it's not our project, but, uh, it may be more of a Jeremy question. Could there or should there be better temporary striping? Like leading to Stratton? Seems like kind of a free-for-all.
They did the best they could with the temperatures.
Okay.
I anticipate talking with Brooks Construction, um, and their sign company, that once it warms up, they will get a better.
Once it warms up, good.
Also down by D and D.
They were dealing with very, very, very cold temperatures when they put that down.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else? Craig?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to say a couple of things real quick. Uh, special thanks to Greg Kitson, uh, who put, uh, from Mindsey Graphic, who put out the, uh, radio advertisement all this month about, uh, supporting the Christmas lights and sending your checks, your charitable checks to the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. We've raised about $4,700 on that. It's been a real nice campaign and it was, it's all going to upgrade and, uh, take care of our Christmas, downtown Christmas lights. Second one was, I don't know if you realize this, we, we purchase a lot of Decatur dollars. Bunge's purchased over 30,000 of those to give to their employees. And to me, that's, uh, it's quite a, a statement for a company to say, look, we want you to spend your money local, so I just, I just wanted to say that too.
Thank you.
And, and thanks again. It's been a real pleasure to work with all you guys. Thanks for all of your support throughout these summer concert series and, and, and when, when, when you ask these guys on the side to help you out just for, they, they step up. It's really, it's really been a pleasure. Thanks, guys.
Tyler, everything?
Uh, Craig got it all.
He got it all. Wiley?
Uh, I'd like to say, first year of being on city council, it's been a pleasure. And working with department heads and others, it's, they're phenomenal. Craig said it exactly right and, uh, so thank you all and Merry Christmas.
Cameron?
Excited about all the plans that we're moving forward with. I think we need to make consider the upstairs.
Yes. I agree.
Working on it.
While we're at it.
Jeremy, anything else?
No, just.
Last chance.
Merry Christmas to everyone.
Phyllis? You get last word? Motion to pay the claims? Okay. That was an abstain. Uh, I got Craig and then Matt as a second to pay the claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion from Matt to adjourn. Second from Cam. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. We're adjourned, Merry Christmas.